The September 2nd meeting of the Marion Town Council will now come to order. We'll begin with the invocation given by Chief Testament. Please stand if you're able.
Pastor Craig. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today as a community and we're asking for your blessings and knowledge and guidance for our leaders to make the right decisions for our community. We ask that you also watch over other communities that suffered sadness this past week with shootings and drownings. And in all this, in your name, we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll start with the roll call and Councilman Carter has told me that he will not be here tonight, so, but we have enough to continue, so we're good. We need the approval of the minutes. Oh, no, I'm sorry, approval of the, yes, of the minutes?
Subway.
Second.
Any discussion? None being heard, all in favor of approving the minutes? It's unanimous. We need the approval of the agenda and I believe we need to make an addition to the agenda, is that right?
Yes, like to add personnel to closed session.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with that addition. Personnel addition.
Second.
I have a motion second of the agenda and we're going to approve that, all in favor? The agenda has been heard, we have no public hearings tonight, nor do we have any public presentations, so we'll move directly into public comment time. And the first person that we have is Becky Oaks and if you would approach the podium, give us your name and address and we'd love to hear from you. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hi Becky.
My name is Becky Oaks. Can y'all hear me?
Yes ma'am.
I live at 346 College Street and I am here because I want to know what's going on. I am tired of reading everything bad on social media, different newspapers which I don't subscribe to, they're all online, and it's time that this community come together, step up and resolve some real issues. Now, I feel free to say that since I was the first one called and I really don't know what exactly is going on other than issues in town that need to be resolved, mainly the homeless. I have discussed this with Mr. Long and Mr. Davis earlier and I don't know what the answer is, but I know that we're not a stupid people that with the right frame of mind and the come-together-ness that we should be capable of, we should be able to solve this. I know it's, other issues as Mr. Davis said in other towns, it can escalate if you do one thing or the other, but we should be able to do this. I don't know what's going on and I'm just going to say it, I thought we would hear some stuff with Mr. Parks's property. I don't know, I know what I've read and I certainly hope what I've read isn't true. So I decided the only way to find out was be here in the present and here for myself. So, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Vicki Hale.
For anyone that doesn't know me, I'm Vicki Hale. I'm on the same wavelength with Becky. My thing is, we're really seeing more and more crime on our street. A month ago, I woke up and I was down looking out my kitchen window and the house beside me, I thought it was fog and I thought it was pretty fog, but it was smoldering and someone had set a fire back there. Well, Colton Smith that lives there was, had been gone for six days, so I knew he hadn't been there. So I walked to the neighbors beside that house and asked them if they'd been burning or whatever and they said no, so I went back and around there and, you know, it was, it had been smoldering and it took me like 17 gallons of water to get it stopped and I even didn't, because it was against Colton's fence, they were on the backside, but the trail lead it right down to the railroad track. Now, I'm not, you know, I didn't see anyone there or anything, but I don't know how else that would have happened. We've done that, last night at 12:20, three houses down, someone tried to get into the race car. I was up and looked out my window, of course didn't see anything. We're having, there's one man in particular and of course we do have a police officer on our block, but there's one guy that I'm really concerned about, not so much, well I am concerned for what he would do, but he walks the streets constantly and he's constantly saying the F-word and doing all this with his hands and, and I, I know you can't lock him up and keep him there, but there's got to be something done because mentally this guy is not in any frame of mind to be doing anything in public. And I don't know if he is in the right frame of mind, if someone could talk him into doing something, I don't know if he's completely just in Mars or whatever, but there again, there's things we need to do and, and I think the really thing I don't want to see is this big division between you all and the public, you know, and that's what I'm hearing. Unfortunately, my nephew from San Diego just got married and he, someone had sent him an article about saying, you know, everybody's fighting and fussing and we're at each other's throats and I said, "No, no, 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 you know, we're small town, we've got problems," but we really got to work this out, okay, for all of us.
Vicki, I have a question. Have you called the police when these incidents, you've, these have happened?
Well, I told, well, when I saw the smoke and I didn't think anything about it, but then I did tell my, D-Lo.
And the gentleman walking the street?
Well, I see him all the time, I mean, he's out there and he's, I mean, you don't have to, you know, he's, he's there, he's up and down and I did go to the police when, one day every pole on Main Street on both sides had a big letter on it saying, "Hi," wanting to meet for, you know, fun, sex, whatever, and here's my phone number. It was on every phone pole on both sides of Main Street and I did go to the police department then and, and, and by the end of the day they got him down, but, you know, somebody should have seen some of that if we have anybody downtown, you know, because that was, and it was a really graphic note and, you know, for fun, whatever, or for marriage and, and, I mean, it was handwritten and it was taped, I mean, someone who went to a lot of work.
Well, I do think when you, when you see these, you know, these persons that are obviously in a different state of mind, I mean, the police just have so much better resources than your council person does.
I'm not looking for the council person to do it.
You know, but I'm saying, your police, those are who we have to call unfortunately.
Right, and that's who I normally do call, I'm just saying.
Unfortunately, we have to call them because they, they have no where to take these people and how to get help.
Which is, I think you know that it's an R-N, that I know that.
But I'm saying, if we don't call the police, we can't do a whole lot about it.
Well, I see that, but I also want to open your eyes that this is going on because if I see it, somebody's doing it in front of your store or your store or your store too.
And when I see it, I call the police and I have, so.
Thank you for your comments.
Would I like to say something?
If you'll approach the podium, sir, and.
Roger Bowman, 844 Edwin Drive. And you're saying call the police and if you think back just a few meetings. Was it Deas that was here? Where his family was approached on Main Street, the police was called and he asked what they'd done and they said, "They can't do nothing." Am I correct?
Not at the time I was sitting there.
Okay, but if somebody's kind of out of their mind and stuff, do they generally do something with them?
Not if they're not proposing to themselves or others.
And I think that's what they're concerned about. We've got people borderline that may do something at any given time, but they're not being dealt with and then it's not being documented to know that they've been dealt with in the past.
Those people are known and unless they're saying, "I'm going to kill you" or "I'm going to kill somebody," really their hands are tied when it comes down to this, but they have options left.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's what everybody's concerned about is, you know, their rights versus ours, you know, they're, you know, there's not a whole lot being done and it's not, it's not their fault because.
The days have taken up to stay hospital, lock them straight up, it's not theirs.
No. Thank you.
And next we have Mr. David Fulton.
Hello, David Fulton, Pearl Avenue. Two weeks ago I brought up about paying the water bill at Walmart. I just wondered, has anything been looked into concerning that? Second thing is, would it be possible to get a list of location where codes are being written up or, you know, property that are being in violation? Or would that be a photo request and if so, how much would it be? And thirdly, why have we never been told how much money within the bank? At all the meeting, it's just pay the account, that's it. I would for one like to know what's in the bank account of Marion. Thank you.
Mr. Fulton, thank you very much for those comments. Make a couple of notes here. And that ends our public comment time, I appreciate everybody's comments and brevity. We will go ahead now with council reports and we'll take it straight down the line. We'll start with Vice Mayor Gates.
No report, Your Honor.
Councilmember Spencer.
No report.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the state holidays for our staff. Our staff comes to work and the banks are closed, the counties closed, the, where they take their trash, to empty the trash, that, that's closed, that's right. And, you know, they are not able to do all of the work that they could do if all these other, and these other places observe the state holidays. So, what that would mean would be adding four more holidays to.
That's not right.
Yeah, it is.
Two more holidays?
Depends on the year.
Four, oh, it depends on the, well, if we're going by this, state holiday would be, you know, four more days.
In the personnel manual now you have 11 and in the last three years you've given a 12 at some point and that's 14, I believe, isn't it?
Well, this is what I'm suggesting that we, the state holiday.
Yeah, that's the state adopted holidays, if somebody looks, I think it's 14, maybe 14 and a half this year. Typically it's 14, 14, so you want 12 to 14.
Well, what we would be adding would be Veterans Day and Election Day and.
Columbus.
Columbus Day and then two half-days, one before Thanksgiving. We already get, or the staff already gets half that day, we're just going to add the other part. The same thing that the, that the banks get, the county get and most of the surrounding towns get, so that's my motion. Oh, and the cost, I know it hasn't been said exactly, but it would be around $10,000 that this would cost.
For all of them.
Yeah. So that's my motion.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion and second, discussion.
It would, you're saying it would cost 10,000 more?
Uh huh.
To offer.
That's what they have figured out.
You, because you have to pay staff.
Right.
Holiday time for those, we wouldn't work any unnecessary staff, so you're only talking about first responders. We don't, if we, if you, if council grants a holiday, we don't work staff unnecessarily.
So.
First responders have to work.
Okay.
We don't have a choice. So because that, because you're adding a holiday, that increases the pay to holiday pay on those days rather than the regular pay. The total of all of them, not per holiday, the total of all of them for basically first responders and sometimes, yeah, water and sewer.
And what that does is it puts us kind of on an equal footing with some of the state and local, our county holidays and the such.
That's exactly what it does, yeah.
And I.
And we can't pick trash up on the days that they're closed.
Yes.
We've always had to work around their schedule if they're not open, so.
So do we just hold the trash on those days that we still pick up? You don't even run it at all?
Well, we try and make it up the next day, the day before, the next day, we try to run two droughts in one day.
We do have, of course, Fire EMS and Samantha?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a flex holiday?
No, not in, not written, however, you adopt 11, your policy is the same every year, it's in the personnel manual, the 11 holidays. In the last three years, at some point in the year, you have granted a 12th holiday, that's what you refer to and it's not always been the same.
Yes.
A few years ago it was Juneteenth and that was the first year there were parades, the state had a parade and there, that year it was observed, another year it was given, an extra day at Christmas was given and yet another year, an extra day for 4th of July was given.
Okay, so.
Because of certain circumstances that had been going on at that time.
If people wanted to celebrate Juneteenth, they would be able to take a vacation day or.
No, that's a state holiday.
Oh, that's a state holiday?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a state holiday. It's been a state holiday for four years.
Okay, I don't have that in front of me, so.
Years ago we got Columbus, but we traded Columbus for.
Yeah, that's what I'm remembering.
Yeah.
Great.
We traded that for another day, I don't remember.
For Thanksgiving.
That's been years ago, Thanksgiving.
After Thanksgiving.
Well, I think it's a splendid idea and if we have council support or, is there any more discussion that we need to make on that? None being heard, let's put it to a vote, the motion is to adopt the state holidays.
Right.
And that varies from year to year, we all realize that.
Right.
Which one included amendment to the personnel manual?
Yes, we can do that without any public hearing or anything, correct? Okay, so, everyone in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, I like holidays.
Thank you.
Anything more?
No.
Councilmember Atwell.
So we do have Ms. Jennings back, so we will get our sanitation meeting scheduled this week hopefully and get that advertised and posted and other than that, nothing new for me.
Thank you, sir.
I hate to be the dead horse to death, but I've had a few phone calls and emails over the trash pickup times, so it's various reasons why people can't get their trash out at a certain time or they're canning at a certain time. So I'd like to propose that we just go to a, your trash cans out the day before, you can get your trash can in the day after trash runs, just to make it easy on everybody and I don't know if anyone wants to stand up and say anything about that, but that's what I've been approached with and I just made the motion that we just do it the day before and the day after.
That, you may make that motion if you wish at this point in time, but I would rather, since the sanitation committee is going to meet, I would rather send that to committee for them to discuss and recommend and then they can bring a recommendation back if, if that would suffice. If you want to make the motion now, you certainly may, but.
Well, that would be a change of the ordinance.
Yeah, I'd love to send it to sanitation then.
And so it would need to have a public hearing.
Okay, thanks Mark.
So let's, let's send that to sanitation.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The folks that have called, you know, they've got, as I understand it, 24 hours to put it out, 24 hours to put it back, is that not, you're saying that's not enough time?
Right.
Maybe you'll get with the sanitation committee and, and kind of flesh out that idea with them and I think that's a good idea.
I'll be glad.
But the proper thing is to send it to committee and let them, and until then, we can tap the brakes on the enforcement of those.
Thank you.
We can modify what we're doing while the committee is looking at that, if that's okay.
Thank you, that's all I had.
So, we have motion and second, further discussion?
No.
Going to send that to committee, all in favor? And, okay, opposed?
I'm for.
I couldn't, couldn't see you over there, that's, okay. Wonderful, now, Mr. Carter is out for the evening, we have Councilmember Hayes.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, we'll go straight into the mayor's report and I see that listed under the mayor's report is the VML conference that will be beginning for me on October the 11th for the mayor's conference and the actual conference dates are Sunday, October the 12th, Monday, October the 13th and I don't, hold on, yes, and the 14th, but we traditionally come home a little faster than that. This is going to be in Roanoke, Virginia this year, so, I mean, there's a possibility of driving up for a portion of it if you don't want to do the whole thing, but I encourage everyone on council to become a part of VML, there's a lot of resources there, a lot of good people and a lot of learning we can do there and sharing of ideas, so if you'd like to attend that, please get with Cindy Stanley or Ken Heath or someone that can make that happen, get rooms there. It's nice to stay actually, but there's a lot that goes on after hours that is important, sitting in the lobby. Larry will tell you all about that, Larry, Larry's very good for that. Okay, at least I got a little chuckle out of the room. Okay, you know, if Mayor Helms were here tonight, he would be wearing an orange jersey. Does anybody know why he would be wearing an orange jersey?
Marion Walsh.
Because, you know how he won. And, but Marion gave a valiant effort and, and if you wanted to listen more to Jason Paris than you already do, you could catch him down there, he does a real good job of commentating. I thought I recognized that voice and, yeah, it's, it's him, he does a good job too, pretty good job. So, yeah, I don't have that same deal with wearing the orange jersey or anything, but Marion, Marion did well, they took the field, they, they held their own pretty well and I think that our team's coming together very nice, so kudos to Marion and, and the band and the color guard and all those other people that make these things happen and I encourage everybody to go to as many of the football games as you can this year and support the band, buy hot dogs and smell popcorn and, and take a cushion and a coat, you'll need it. Other than that, I did attend the graduation at the Blue Ridge Job Corps Center, several others were there as well from the town and the county and it was touching, it was a nice event, I hope that we go to another one next year. Enough said on that, that closes the mayor's report for the day. Evening meeting, we'll move on to the attorney's report.
Following the last town council meeting, a deed was presented to a property owner and the property owner did convey an easement to the town of Marion that enabled the town crew to get in and get the work done on Main Street in a quick fashion, so I would just say, want to say thank you to that property owner because the town would have been digging a pretty deep hole and tying up Main Street for more than one day.
Yeah, that's, that was a great solution and I'm glad that they stepped forward to do that.
That's all.
That's, and nothing else? Okay, we'll move right on to staff reports and Cindy couldn't be with us this evening, does anyone want to update in her place?
I don't have a report.
No report, okay. Then Chief Testament.
Last week I attended the Virginia Chiefs Police Association's conference in Williamsburg, had some really good training, also met governor candidates and they give a speech each day of their goals and objectives. Detective Sexton has, is back on the station now from attending the polygraph school up in Pennsylvania, he still has several more tests to go to be able to obtain his license. Right now he has like a temporary license and has happened to administer polygraphs underneath the state of Williamsburg. We put in an order for the polygraph machine and everything, we'll be, we'll be able to have those on station and run them for the town and some surrounding jurisdictions if need be. Tomorrow I leave for the breaks or the executive retreat academy is, there's going to be several speakers from Liberty University, we're going to be taking several classes with that, look forward to that and learning some more and that's, that's all I have, if it's any questions.
I think the PD's doing a great job, I'm glad we're moving forward with things, thank We do not have Chief Ham tonight, but we do have Chief Keesling.
Your Honor, counsel, thank you. Chief Ham's on holiday today, so I'm here. Basically, for the month of August, me and Chief Tally were talking and we're figuring we'll be around 2:15, 2:20 for calls, so we're still, I think for the year, above, every year it keeps going up, so, and we've been busy the last 24 hours with fires, we had three fires in the last 24 hours. We also went to the graduation the other day and we thought it was very nice and we liked it.
Appreciate the directions, or I'd still be up there wandering around.
That's okay, and have you answered any questions for anybody?
Were the fires, house fires or rush fires?
Well, the first one was set off as a, as a structured fire, it turned out to be a storage building next to a house. The next one was a. The next one was a car fire parked next to a house, and the last one was actually a stove car fire, some food. But no serious, well, besides the car fire, I mean, there's not much you can, you know, when the car burns up, but nobody was injured, and it didn't extend any farther than where it was at, so.
Good. Thank you.
What type of car was that?
I believe it was a Subaru.
Subaru. Okay.
Chief Keesling?
Yes, sir.
I noticed in the report that you sent us that the bill that was sent to the county for EMS services was $34,000, which seemed lower than lots of them. Is it, I mean, is that sort of the norm unless something comes up, or, I mean, you know, in that partnership, that's a, it's a pretty-
I would have to refer that mostly to Rusty for that, but my, you know, the way that's billed is, based on, you know, how the money's collected, there'll be times when we'll get a big influx of payments, and, you know, next month's influx, you know, and they just get billed a difference, so that's, it's happened, that's the way it was with the other bill, company two in the past, you'll have-
It's kind of based on the billing company, how much they get loaded up.
I believe there was also a grant this month that was in the funds that was subtracted in the revenue fund, that we received directly, wasn't there? There was $7,000. I can pull it up.
Yeah, you'll have to let her know.
But anyways, that seemed, I mean, very reasonable. I know some months are higher.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, and it's, and basically, it's also what type of calls you run, and then whether we get paid for those calls, too, you know, and then for the, as far as the collection goes.
So, what you're basically saying is income offsets expenses?
Well, I mean, I mean, that was a mild bill for them. I mean, I would, that's a fair assumption for the-
And I think we're waiting to see if we can find the information on the grant, and we'll bring that up later on in the meeting, if that's okay.
That's fine.
We appreciate your time. Do you have anything further?
No, sir, and we'll make sure you get that information, okay?
The collections were higher.
Okay. Great.
The collections were higher that month, all EMS bills.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ken Heath with Economic Development, and he's going to tell us all how great things are.
Yeah, for sure. We've got two things. We've got two ribbon cuttings this Friday. One is 11 o'clock at Windy City Dogs across from the former Happies, and we also have ribbon cutting following that at the new florist downtown, Main Street Florist, Frankie Farmer. Please put those on your calendar, come and join us. Other than that, that's all I have.
Anything that you want to say about the chili cook-off or anything like that?
We're pushing applications. We're getting early on this year.
This is your chance to say, get a chili team together.
Get a chili team together. The town used to do, the council used to do a chili team, so if you want to do one, we'd love to have you. If not, if you want to come down and volunteer, we'd love to have your help. We're getting some applications in, partnering with the Chamber to do craft and arts vendors on Broad Street. Several chili teams have inquired about setting up a chili, done a lot of TV. Mayor and I went down. They're getting tired of seeing us down there, so it's working, so-
But it is working.
It is. And we get people who come up here and say they, they, they see it, so it works, so.
They said that you looked good.
That, they lied, but we'll take it, we'll take it. They said a camera adds 50 pounds to you, and they got about 10 cameras down there. But it's a good opportunity for us, it's the second Saturday in October, and plenty of time to get people lined up, so anybody interested in setting up a community booth, we encourage them to set up a community booth for free. $50 to set up a craft booth, $50 to set up a chili team, and H.S. Williams is already trying to perfect their recipe, so that'll be a lot of fun.
All right.
And we also need folks that would like to volunteer to be chili tasters for the judging. So, if you have a cast iron stomach, you want to, you in?
We've got some chili judges here.
See, Mayor, we've worked it out, you're in, we got us a chili judge. If anybody else wants to help out, we need three or four of you, so. We'll talk about that later. The town won't buy it, but I may buy you one. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, and next we have Todd Long with Zoning and Property Maintenance.
I actually have no reports out, Mayor.
Okay, no report, and we'll move right along now with the town manager's report. Mr. Hamm.
Yes, sir. I'm going to go over a few things like I did last council meeting. Not a whole lot is going to change, but I will bring it a little more to speed. South Main Sewer Project, they got the manhole installed, that was the project that Mark was referring to. They're still laying pipes. Have they finished the pipe yet? They're still laying the pipe to it, but hopefully, they'll be done with that in the next couple of weeks. Nine through 12 Water Phase, Cumberland Heights area, all the services have been switched over, and they've still got some utility patching to do. Nine through 12, that's East Main, where they've been working on, East Main. They pressure tested last week and bacteria tested the line, the main line. Once they're finished with all the testing, then they'll go back and start to tie those to the services. Radio read meters, if you remember, we were short about 100 meters or so. We didn't expect them till the end of this month. They came in earlier than expected. We're within 30 meters of having the rest of the meters installed.
All right.
Hopefully, we'll get that done this week. Steel Park Playground, if you've not been up there, we finally got dirt broke, and they're working on the grading. Actually, it's starting to take a little shape. You can look at it and see what's taking place now. Public Works Crew, I'm sure you've all noticed, we're trying to spruce up the front of the building a little bit. We've painted, reworked the handrails, and been painting them the last few days. We have some other plans on, maybe put a little retaining wall out here. We've removed that, the wooden gate that was out here that separates the sprint building and our building. We're going to put up another rod or a panel or something there, make it look a little bit better. And I'm thinking we'll work on the planning in the spring. Last meeting, we talked about, we had some citizens that was concerned about Market Street Duplex. We met with a family off of Market Street that had concerns. We had Sandy Bryant with Mount Rogers and Logan Masters. They came and sat and talked to us for, with the family from Market Street, answered their concerns, and Ms. Bryant with Mount Rogers, she made a commitment to the family that if, that she would be in touch with them, and if, be willing to work with them and answer any of their concerns that they may have going forward. So, I think that was a good meeting, it was a good idea to have it, and I think we kind of left all feeling better about the situation. Other than that, that's all I have, unless you have questions. Huh? Oh, yeah. Tony told me this evening that they've started working on the pickleball court, painting the pickleball court.
Should have some good weather.
Yeah, it's supposed to be dry, I think.
Tony, do you have sort of a master plan for any of the SERP program where we're tearing up the streets for trying not to leave a street or two over the winter?
Yeah, that's why we're passing as we go now, instead of leaving.
We have vowed not to do that in Evans.
And then also, have you found, were you able to find any early leaks and contact people, or many people calling in and giving phone numbers?
Oh, yeah. We've called several.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And I think the girls have been getting some, people coming in, give phone numbers, and, and yeah, we've notified several.
Found them much more quickly.
Yeah. And that's, that's working great, I think. It's still going to take some time for all of us to get our legs under some of it, but yeah, it's, it's, it's working good.
All right. Any further questions for the town manager?
Billy, with what Ms. Oaks had requested, and what Ms. Hale had come in and requested, would you be willing to set aside some time and sort of go over with those ladies and answer any questions that they have to sort of, to sort of see and answer specifically whatever they're concerned about at this time, and sort of debrief on anything that
Whatever we're dealing with in Trimmer. Sure.
Thank you.
Becky just hollered. You, Becky.
Lots of Beckys in the room. Said, where's Becky?
She went to sleep, Becky.
Okay, so if there's nothing further for the town manager, is there anything else that the council needs to address before we go into closed session?
Oh, I've got one more thing, real quick, sorry.
Sure.
Streetsweeper. We got our street sweeper, told you that last month. We got our training on it. It's been, it's been sweeping streets now for a couple of weeks, and everybody's seen B-Tick. It looks beautiful.
That's-
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, yes, if you have a question.
Would putting up no trespassing signs on people's property where it seems to be all of that traffic in the wee hours, would that help any?
It's my understanding, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong.
What was that?
If, correct me if I'm wrong, and what I'm about to say, but if a person has a no trespassing sign up on their property, can law enforcement charge those trespassers?
They can, but they can be written in some words.
Let me ask you. Exactly. Will they? Or does the person that owns the land act up?
We can, we can write it on behalf of the person that owns the land, and they will need to come to court, testify.
Do you have to host that property?
You do not have to. You verbally warn somebody, or verbally tell somebody not to be on your property.
With a witness?
You can just verbally tell them. And with a witness license, yeah. If you verbally told somebody not to be on their property.
But it's not just one street. I mean, you can come to my office and watch my cameras, and there are people on my parking lot all hours of the night, running up and down the hill, on the sidewalk. They tried to break into my camper one night, and they were on camera. I mean, it's, you know, it's a problem all over town, it's not just College Street.
And I think, you know, we have, I've lived there since 2015, 10 years, so there have been various times we have requested patrols on that street throughout those 10 years. It's getting worse, and I don't know if it's due to the homeless or just more people running around at all hours of the night, but I think last night, someone had their alarm go off on their car at the end of College Street, creepy ladies of the moment. And, you know, that's down next to the traps, you're familiar with that area, and it seems like when, and I know you're only dealing with a limited amount of officers at that time of night, but it does seem like when there's more presence, and I'll tell you, Officer Brown, when his patrol cars in the neighborhood, you don't see anybody out moving, you know? But when there is a presence, it seems to really make a difference. Like I said, I realize you can't be everywhere, but I don't know, I just, as I stated at the beginning of this, I think as a community, there's a lot of smart people that can put their heads together and come up with a way to manage this. I know we can't fix everything, but we can fix our community. And I know our neighborhood has come up with a community texting, watch, whatever, so when, you know, I don't know about you all, but it makes me feel better knowing that I've got that list of people that, you know, if I feel insecure or something, that I can put out that text, and other people's going to see it, and they're going to be able to-
And I would encourage it for every neighborhood, our sidewalks, public property, our sidewalks, public property.
Sidewalks?
Yes. So, there's bills all against being on the sidewalk. People can walk on the sidewalk.
But I mean, if we call, if we call you every time, there's, y'all wouldn't stay on the run, looking at somebody, like she said, throwing their arms, using the F-word, G-D, I mean, they come out of office screaming that, day, I mean, broad daylight, you know, so we could be calling y'all all the time, and you don't have the manpower on the shore to do that. But you don't have the resources to move these people, right, to a place like Southwest Virginia State used to be.
Now, we do have the Mount Rogers Crisis Center, and some people like that will ask, hey, do you need to go talk to somebody? Because unless they say the national law, they're going to harm somebody or themselves, there's really not too much we can do unless they are intoxicated or something like that, or trespassing on somebody's property. But, you know, for, for just being able to take them somewhere, unless they agree to go, like, we'll get rides to that sort of the crisis center, and that's pretty frequent, actually. They're open 24/7 now, and we'll ask people if they want to go, and we try to encourage that. And like, a lot of people will take us up on it, but there is some people that do not. And sadly, there's a lot of times, you know, there's not much we can do.
May I ask a question? The Crisis Center, is that just for 24 hours or a certain period of time?
They're open 24/7.
Yeah, but if, say, if you took a person up there, how long?
That could, that could end up on the services they need or require.
So, they would, not evaluate, but the word I'm looking for, evaluate?
Like that, like that.
Yes.
They would, yes, on a general basis, and if they see that they need services, then they can go as far as issuing an emergency custody order to have them evaluated, and that's what they're, but, you know, that, people are offered that.
Is that our only option in this town now?
If somebody's really, I mean, this is actually, the Crisis Center's really not that old, so, I mean, I bring the mental health game up, but it's still just a work in progress.
Well, this is a very healthy discussion, and I'm glad that we're having this. And if you have further questions, yes?
I would just like to ditto what Mr. Atwell said. For our citizens, it's really important. We can't do everything. We can't fix everything, but it's really important for you all to talk to Billy, or talk to the appropriate employee. They can explain why we do what we do, or why we don't do what maybe some people think we should do. So, use them, they're our best resource. Talk to the employees and, for your questions. That, I think that's very important, because we've got good, dedicated, very qualified employees that can answer any question that you all would have, or anybody would have, council would have.
This is very true, and we didn't, we don't say it enough, but thanks to the PD, Fire, EMS, Public Works, everybody is doing a splendid job, and as we go into fall, there'll be a lot of leaves coming on the ground, and there'll be a few other things that we need to think about there. But right now, we need to think about going into closed session. If there's nothing else, if Councilwoman Jennings would-
Okay.
Bring us into closed session.
Sure. I make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss two issues. One, personnel is allowed under state code 2.23711A1, and the second one, a legal issue as declared under state code 2.23711A7.
I second that.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor? And we move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for being here.
The September 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Marion Town Council will now return to session. Councilwoman Jennings, will you take us out of closed session?
Okay, I make a motion to go back into open session and we clearly discuss the personnel and legal issues that will require, is allowed in the State Code 2.237-12.
I second that motion.
Oh, I believe we need a roll call vote. Yes? I think so.
We need a roll call.
Corbett?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
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 We are now back in regular session. Is there any items that the Marion Town Council needs to take up at this point in time? Do I hear any motions?
To adjourn? Yes, sir, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor. Marion Town Council is now closed. Thank you, everybody.